Good evening. Welcome to the January 4th, 2017 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing personnel matters. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Do we have any participation in government students here tonight, PEG students?
All right, great. Your requirement is to stay till 9:00 o'clock. At 9:00 o'clock, we'll take a break. You'll need to come up and there'll be sign-out sheets here. If you have any forms that need to be signed, any of the board members will do it for you at that time. If we get done before 9:00, then just come up at the end of the meeting. Introductions.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Joanne Cunningham.
Michael Cooper.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Lynn Lenhart.
Christine Beck.
And Judy Kehoe.
And Charmaine Whitersinger is ill this evening, not able to join us. Next, we'll start with approval of the minutes of the December 21st, 2016, Regular Board of Education.
Second.
That's a first and second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention that item carries? Do we have a representative from the Student Senate with us this evening? If you come up to the microphone, you raise that up.
Hi, my name is Connor Doyle. I'm Vice President of Student Senate. Right now, things have slowed down a bit for us. As I mentioned last time, we purchased the new television and soundbar systems for the weight room in the high school. And we're starting our preliminary planning for Snowball, which is going to take place in February. And we're tinkering with some ideas for different community service projects.
When is the Snowball? February, you said?
February 11.
And that's on-site?
Yeah, it's on the district calendar.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report, Ms. Monroe.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. It's been pretty quiet with the break. I did want to let the board know that our senior class did receive a letter from Albany County Executive Dan McCoy thanking them for their efforts with the holiday toy drive for the Albany County adopted family. We did have something on our website prior to the break. In just 10 days, the council was able to collect more than 2,000 new games, toys, books, and gift items. And I'd like to thank all the students who assisted with the initiative, as well as Ms. Jessica Westervelt, the Senior Class Advisor, and Mr. Mike Klugman for his support. And that's all I have tonight.
Moving on, Board of Education report. Myself, I don't have anything, but Happy New Year to everybody. Looking forward to 2017.
We have the music series at the high school coming up next week, so anybody who can come out and see it, it's always a good music ensemble groups that we can choir, band, orchestra. I always look forward to it, and I know there's several next week, so that would be nice. And also, I read in, I think it was on NISBA, and I think it's interesting, is that they're looking for legislation now to pass public college education in New York State for families that make under $125,000, which if we can be one of the first states to pass that, I think that's fabulous. Has anybody heard any more on that front?
The governor actually announced that yesterday.
Yesterday, yeah.
It would be phased in, I think, the first year is $120,000, then going up eventually to $125,000. It would be in addition to, if you were eligible for TAP, my understanding is you would get the TAP first, and then Pell Grant and anything else, and then this would be in supplemental. It would only be for SUNY and CUNY.
No, but I think it'll allow more opportunities for even students of Alphacham to participate in a four-year education, so.
But it's definitely a proposal that he's putting forward for this year's budget.
And that's all I have.
All right. Next is our presentation this evening. We have a Slingerlands Elementary Presentation, "Technology in the Classroom." Before we begin, obviously, everybody knows we're here at Slingerlands. I'd like to thank the administration and staff here for hosting us this evening. We do this, we go out to each of the elementary schools, and the middle school, and high school. We rotate meetings around during the year so that we get to visit, as a Board of Education, to each of the facilities. And thank you for hosting us this evening.
So, good evening and welcome to Slingerlands. It's great to see so many people here this evening. We have many of our 5th graders here going to help us with our presentation tonight. I knew last year when our 5th grade classrooms began using the Chromebooks as part of their program that this was what I wanted to do my presentation on when you came to Slingerlands this year, so I'm so grateful that I have the opportunity to do this for you. This evening, our presentation is focused on "Technology in the Classroom K5." What we're talking about are things that happen in all of our elementary schools, not just here at Slingerlands. Our focus is on the knowledge goal that the Board has set for us. Our program focuses on finding innovative practices to use technology in the classroom in highly engaging, rigorous curriculum and program for our children. And you'll see that in just a little while. We have with us this evening Laurel Jones, who is the Administrator in Charge of Technology and our RTI program. Did I say that right, Laurel? Along with our 5th grade teachers, who I will introduce in just a few minutes. Laurel is first going to give you an overview of technology in the classroom and talk about technology across our district. And then we'll move to a program that Slingerlands is doing with the Chromebooks in the classroom with our 5th graders. And our 5th graders will be here to teach all of you how to use the Chromebooks. So, we're excited about that.
Thanks, Heidi. So, technology is entwined in every part of our lives. It affects how we connect, it affects how we socialize, it affects how we shop, and it affects how we learn. And it only makes sense for us to include this in our classrooms. So, integrating technology into our classroom has brought a lot of things. It's brought a lot of excitement. Am I right? Yes. Kids are excited, they're more apt to learn, they're more engaged. If you give them a tool that they love to use, they're going to want to use it more and more and go deeper and deeper into the curriculum. It gives students a chance to interact with each other and really collaborate. And they're going to show you how this works later, but they can work on documents together at home and really join in on what everyone's thoughts are. Do you like doing that? Definitely. Integrating technology is a great way for us to meet the diverse needs of our learners. We can adjust ability levels in anything that we're doing on the computers, and plug your ears, but they don't even know. They don't know that the person sitting next to them may be doing a different task than they're doing, or we're providing more support to them just online as we do it alongside of them. So, it's really a great tool for us to use in that aspect. When we have mobile technology in our classroom, we get up-to-date information faster than ever before. It just gives us a great tool. And it helps the students take control of their own learning. They can make decisions, they can choose what they're learning about, they can do great thinking, and then they can share this information with their peers, and with their parents, and with the world. So, I'm going to show you a brief movie about what we're doing with technology in our classrooms, So, I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie O'Shea. You going to do some formal introducing?
I'm going to do some formal introducing first. So, first, I'd like to introduce you to my 5th grade team. They're an incredible group of teachers, very talented and dedicated to their students. And when they received the Chromebooks last year, they dove in headfirst, and it has changed their instruction. I'd like to introduce you to Bonnie O'Shea, Matt Burns, Maria Qualter, Lester Beator, Stephanie Domel, and Kelly Ward, sorry, Kelly. I'm going to turn it over to Bonnie, who's going to give you an introduction.
And I hope you don't mind, but I did write down some notes because I didn't really want to forget anything. But first, I would like to say a huge thank you to the Board of Ed and Bethlehem Central for providing these carts for every classroom. Because probably the most primary way our instruction has changed is that in the past, we would have a cart of 30 computers to share between 20 or more classrooms. You had to sign up for them a week or two in advance. You couldn't do instantaneous, spontaneous, teachable moment work. And that has totally changed. Because one of the things we do is during our deep discussions, which we're hosting in our classrooms, someone will have a question, and we can go right to the Chromebooks, find the information that we're looking for. The other thing that Laurel spoke about was that we can work collaboratively, either in the classroom or from home. So, if you're sick, I'm sick, we can still get together on the computers and really share comments and suggestions about work. They can ask me questions, I can answer them. In fact, we did that a couple of weeks ago before winter break, because I was out sick one day, and we're working on these huge science projects. And I said, "Aha, we can still do it." The other thing is that they always have information at their fingertips. They all know how to access the databases that are here at Bethlehem, as well as using, you know, general search engines that they're used to using at home. But our librarians also work very closely with us to make sure that they know all of The thing that I like to do, other than the collaboration that we've already spoken about, is that using Google Classroom, I can actually post a number of documents there or videos that I want the kids to be working on, and I don't have to make copies and copies and go through rooms of paper. And for kids who are a little unorganized, or teachers who might be unorganized, we don't lose their things, because they're all right on their Chromebook. Nothing ever gets lost. And they can say, "You didn't respond to my book letter yet, Mrs. O'Shea. Did you check your email?" And I'll say, "No, I haven't." So, everything is there. And I think probably for me, as an older teacher, teaching kids to save documents correctly before the Chromebooks was a nightmare. They would say, you know, work for hours, produce a work of, you know, something for their curricular project, and then not save it correctly, and it would just be gone. So, this with the Google Chromebooks, they are saved automatically. Any changes that are made, saved instantaneously. So, I have to thank you again. It's really changed our lives. We have a slide here that also shows you some of the products that we use. Mostly through the Google work itself is the Google Docs, Google Slides, which are like PowerPoints or Excel spreadsheets, but they're in the Google product line. For kids who may struggle with writing, they can use Voice to Text and get their document right on their screen without having to worry about, "How do I spell it? How do I write it?" It's just there, so if it's in their head, they can get it down. I already talked about the library databases. Google Slides, we're doing a number of projects in Science and Social Studies right now, and many of the children have chosen to do slideshows, which you're going to get to see for Social Studies. The other thing is they have instant access to things like BrainPop, Discovery Education. Scholastic has a really nice video set of instructional materials that you can access. And for reading, we have a number of programs. Raz Kids, which you can do at home or at school to practice reading, and News ELA, which is a great current event site that also will, well, we'll talk a little bit more about it, but they can answer questions after they've read things. And then we have instant results and feedback as far as assessment. I know that Mr. Burns is one of our special ed teachers, and he probably would like to piggyback on some of the things I've said.
Thanks. I would like to say that having the Chromebooks in the classroom is just fun. So, it's a benefit to everyone, because as soon as the Chromebook is in the student's hands, it's just an exciting experience, period. For students who are reluctant writers and readers, the Chromebook being in front of them is a motivator in and of itself. So, just having the machine in front of you is going to help students initiate and maintain focus throughout tasks. So, that's a great benefit. For students who may not struggle with motivation, they might be very motivated but struggle with academics, reading and writing in and of itself. The Chromebooks are installed with educational software that has many benefits. I would say, in general, they're twofold. One is that, just to keep it short, one is that it allows students to access educational materials that might be beyond their instructional level. And the other benefit is that it allows students to work to a potential that they might not otherwise be able to work to if they were just working with a pencil and paper.
Can I piggyback?
Sure.
Also, for our ENL, English as a New Learner, students, there are programs that can actually read the text out loud to them and give them pictures to identify what it is that they're reading. So, it helps with their comprehension level as well.
You can go first, ladies and gentlemen.
I think one of the greatest things about the Chromebooks and integrating technology into the classroom from a teacher perspective is the ease with which it has allowed us to collect data. I know there's a big drive in education to really make sure our education is working for each individual student. And the best way to do that is to see how they're learning, what they're learning, where their deficits are, and where their strengths are. And the Chromebooks and the many programs we've had access to have streamlined that process tremendously. And what it's allowed us to do as teachers, where if we were grading physically over time, we would have to really line up all of those assignments that we graded by hand and look carefully for patterns of learning. And many of these programs do that instantaneously over time, which I think has been the most beneficial thing. And some of these programs will even tell you, based on what they've read over the past eight weeks, "Your student has missed the past 12 questions using the cause and effect skill." So, that probably would have taken a lot, a lot of time for a teacher to carefully see every time they missed a question that had to do with cause and effect, and the computer is doing that really right away.
Can we see the? So, we have a couple of things that we wanted you to look at with regards to collecting data. This is what I consider to be the premier way of collecting data. I have my students look at a BrainPop video, which is related to my curriculum. So, recently, we've been doing a lot with ecology. So, the children, you can see greenhouse effects, you can see climate changes, autumn leaves. You can also see a little something there with regards to theme, because we use it for all areas of the curriculum. And what I'm able to do is have them email me the results. So, I can see just from looking that, that some of the children are doing extremely well in these areas, while others might need some additional support. So, this is huge for us. It really is. It's a huge benefit. The other thing I wanted to mention is that the Chromebooks that we have are amazing in that they are the most reliable technology that we have ever used in this building. And I've been around for a little while, and I've seen a lot of technology kind of come, and in many cases falter. This has never faltered for me. We have 30 of them, I have 25 students, so I did have two with a problem, but it was never an issue, because I had enough for everyone. It has been the most reliable technology that I have ever used, and it's something that the kids can just pull out, and they can work with, and they can put it back. It self-charges. It is absolutely ideal.
This is just one more example of that data collection. This is a site called Newsy LA, which I have found to be just the most fantastic resource. And the first couple of weeks, I was assigning an article, and students were reading it and taking the quiz. And then the third week, one of them was like, "Ms. Qualter, there's a lot of great articles on here. Can we choose what we want to read?" And I was like, "Well, that's brilliant, and yes." So, now each week, they choose whatever current events topic they want to read about. But what the program does is when they take the quiz at the end, and what I like about Newsy LA quizzes is it's not really your standard multiple choice. It is saying, "Please click on the part of the text that best identifies the main idea." It's going in-depth. Their questions really match the New York State ELA tests. And over time, it really produces an assessment tracking. Now, not only the teacher can see this, but the students can see this, and it's really motivating to them. They've become so happy when they level up, or when they increase that quiz score, and when they see their progress over time. And then as the teacher, I can really go in and even click deeper than that on the titles and see where they missed and where their deficits are.
Can you choose?
Yes, and Newsy LA, that's a great point. So, many of these reading programs can be differentiated for the individual student. So, in Newsy LA, if I did want my class to all read the same article, but there are multiple reading levels in one classroom, they can read the same article, but there's five different levels at which that article can be produced. So, you can assign the levels to the students, and they're all getting the same information, but at a level that's accessible to them. So, now, I will hand it over.
Okay, so now it's your turn. We have our students here with us this evening, because what better way to learn than to see exactly what they're doing? So, we were hoping that you wouldn't mind if they scooted their chairs up and sat side by side with each of you, so they could show you some of their work. I just thought it would be nice if they could just stand and introduce themselves. So, do you want to just say your name and pass the microphone?
Sasha Greenberg.
Catherine O'Neil.
Rose Sheehan.
Sean Parker.
Jake Donovan.
Luke Sabir.
Elizabeth Austin.
Claire Hutton.
Hannah Eng.
Noah Rosin.
Macy Fischler.
Okay. So, they all know exactly who they're heading to. If you prefer them to stand, that's okay, too. Do you have a preference?
Whatever's easiest.
Okay, so you can head right to who you are going for.
So, while they get situated, what they're going to show you first is some work they completed recently. So, I'll just give a little quick background, if that's okay, while they're getting settled. So, part of our 5th grade social studies curriculum is to study ancient civilizations, and then also European exploration, and how it impacts the Western Hemisphere. And what our students are doing now is showing the board members Google Slide presentations they put together after doing a brief research project on a chosen explorer. Students worked in groups of two or three to do about three class periods worth of research on their explorer, and then put together a Google Slide presentation as a group. We have one of them up here projected on the screen today, so that you can see the students going in and making changes as they do their work. One of the great features is that, as a teacher at home at any hour, I think that was at 5:55 AM, I can go in and make comments on their work and give them feedback, so when they open their presentation the next day, they know exactly what they need to do. So, what they're doing now is going in and reading some of our comments and feedback, and showing board members how they can make changes to improve their presentation, and how they can work simultaneously with their partners on the same Google Slide presentation. So, it's a shared product. He's taking, it looks like maybe the suggestion I gave at the bottom of the screen to add a comment about the significance of the photo, so that his viewers know why he chose that particular image for the information he's sharing on the page. It takes very little instruction for students at this age to show them all the amazing things they can do on Google Slides. And most often, at least once a week, one of them finds something that they can teach me, which is also great. And sometimes it will be working collaboratively, and I'll just kind of, you know, say out loud to the room, "Does anybody remember how to embed the video?" And instantaneously, I've got four or five hands. So, they do a lot of work together. And the teacher is much more of a facilitator rather than a giver of knowledge, which is our goal always. And this type of technology has helped us to make that possible. I think it's a little more exciting to see your teachers type comments than red pen all over the page. Google Slides has really replaced PowerPoint, which is what most of us used to use. It's a lot more user-friendly, it's a much more simpler format, it's easier to find all the different tasks and all the different features students would like to embed. And of course, everything saves automatically, so it just completely eliminates the concern of students losing their work. Students can also respond to our comments or ask further questions, and also mark them as resolved when they feel as though they've done what we've asked of them. So, it's just a super streamlined way of keeping track of their work. So, 5th graders, I hate to interrupt you, because I know you're doing fabulous work, but we want to be able to show our Board of Education what you're doing with recap and how that works. So, Ms. Qualter will give you some directions, and we're just going to switch gears, okay?
Okay. You have about 30 seconds to keep working on what you're working on while I explain what recap is. Recap has been this really great assessment tool at the end of a topic, in which the students go in, and again, this is great for all types of students, because it's a video screen, and they're recording themselves. And you give them that bigger question, the learning point of that lesson or of that unit, and they need to record their answer. And all the videos get sent directly to the teacher, and you get to hear their response. All righty, can you stop, look, and listen, students? I have almost told you. It's okay. You can continue right when we're finished. We're going to go into your Gmail, please. And you were all sent a link to today's recap, that I have no doubt the board members are thrilled to help you with and be assessed after this very informative presentation. And once you have your question, you may, together with the adult you are working with, answer that question in the video. So, you may take a few minutes to do that, and then we will review what submissions come in on the app.
You can do it right now?
Is there anything?
So I can move.
Sean, yep, yep.
How many times do you work on...
I don't like to...
But sometimes I can...
Okay.
And then, do you ever get to take these home?
I like to do this.
Do you want to do this?
Okay, as they wrap up, I just want to say one more thing. As you're seeing up here, there is a really great self-assessment component to Recap. And I think it's always really important for the students to communicate how comfortable they are with a new topic to you before you assess them. And when they submit their response, right before they submit it, they are able to communicate to you, "I've got this, I'm good, I don't need any more teaching." "I kind of get it, might need a little more teaching." Or, "I do not get this still," and you'll probably be able to tell that when you listen to my response. So it's a really good way to see it. And, we just want to refresh? Okay, so we have six submitted responses, and I will play one for you, just so you get the idea. And I got permission from, from Noah.
There, we have two effects of cultural, of European exploration. The first effect is the Colombian exchange, which gave the Native Americans a lot of different foods and animals they didn't have. There's also the effect of cultural...
Yes, the second effect is cultural diffusion, which is where two cultures come together and collide and create a more diverse population.
So we want to open it up to see if you have any questions. Boys and girls, you did a fabulous job. Can we give those students a round of applause?
So, boys and girls, you can just sit where you are. You might be able to help us out with any questions they might have. So we'll open it up for the board if you have any questions to ask the children or any of our team.
How many hours out of the day, or an hour, how often do you use the Chromebooks per day?
We definitely use them for social studies and science, and that's about 45 minutes every day. We use them in math, we use them in reading workshop, we use them in writing workshop. So I would say probably a good three hours a day, they have access and use these.
And I think it's important also to understand that not all students are always working them, on them at the same time. It's really on a need base.
We also use them for literacy centers, for like Raz Kids and New Zealand.
I would just have a comment. I think that the kids maneuvered around so efficiently, more so than many adults I know.
That's what I was...
And it ain't even quick. And it's going to be a great tool, a great ability as a, um, adult and whatnot.
And I'll just piggyback and speak for my fourth grade colleagues. I think that they have the exact same feelings at this point. And the third grade rooms that have the carts as well. It's a great investment.
I know this is just a snippet of what goes on in a classroom, but it's unbelievable, just the amount of learning that goes on through the Chromebooks. And I wish I had been fortunate enough, I'd be much more tech savvy now, and Sean made me kind of feel inferior here. So he did a great job.
I think too, the teachers are really learning, which is also fabulous, and they're changing the way that they're teaching the students and the way that the students are learning.
I like, I like the collaborative part too, because if a comment was made, I mean Sasha, you, you know, Mrs. Ward made comments to you when you thought about it and incorporated or maybe didn't. You know, it was a back and forth, that rather than feeling it was a negative comment, it was something that could be thought about and shared.
So the other thing I thought was worth mentioning is that as teachers, we of course have concerns when students have access to the Internet. But we also have access to everything they do, and they know that. We simultaneously can watch what all 25 students in our classroom are doing, what sites they're on at the very moment they're on it. And them knowing that, I think helps with keeping them on the straight and narrow and making sure we're always doing what we need to do. So it's another great benefit.
I'm just curious what the students would say their favorite thing is about using the Chromebooks? Any of you?
Science is probably my favorite thing we do with the Chromebooks.
Sure. Google Slides.
Is being able to, if I'm at home, one of my friends is doing the science project.
I always like knowing what they do before I get to school and not having to ask, "Did you go onto Google yesterday?" And if you did, what'd you do?
I would agree with Noah that science is the thing that I would enjoy most on the Chromebooks.
Well, we are making projects for the science fair on Friday, this Friday, and me and my
partner are working on a picture book for science, all about the crayfish behaviors.
I like working together with friends on the slides and docs.
As, as a teacher, or being an older teacher, I would say if I were a teacher, it could be somewhat intimidating, but at the same time, it would be motivating, because there's so much available to you. So much you probably can't even take it all in. What do you find the most challenging about using the Chromebook?
I am the oldest teacher here. And again, I didn't grow up with a computer, and when we, we got these last year, you know, I was at the point where I felt pretty good using a Mac, and the, this Chromebook threw me for a loop. I just said, "I can't make sense of it, it doesn't seem sophisticated enough." But this is just a year later, and I don't know how I lived without it, in all honesty. Because again, I lose things, just like my kids do, or misplace them, I should say. And I can't lose anything this way.
I think you also need to be really comfortable with no longer being the expert. And it's really cool when students come to me and I, someone asks me something, and I'm like, "Like, how do I embed a video in Slide 5?" And I was like, "I don't know." And then six hands shoot up, and they're like, "But we know." It's like, "Great, there you go." So really getting on that level where you can seek out your students as a peer and learn from each other.
It's amazing.
And I can relate to what you said about it being very cumbersome to think about all of the options out there for you. And we consult with Eileen Pasquini, who's a technology specialist in the district. And she often gives us, she'll come in with 10 things she wants to show us, and I usually stop her at two, because it becomes overwhelming. And I want to leave the room with just one strategy. And quite often, if we get enough information about that certain application, just the foundation, and we can pass that on to the kids, they take off with it and they know more about it than we do within a week.
And I just have to give a lot of credit, again, to streamline all of the resources out there. Laurel, this year, has been like a lifesaver, because she's doing all of that and then picking out what is really meaningful. And she came and she comes and does like 10-minute or 15-minute sessions, and you're able to use it in your classroom the next day, and you understand it, and you know that it's one of the best things, because you've really streamlined that process. So I am so grateful for you and that.
I just wanted to make a comment, and this is really also for the parents. This, last year, I had a staff person who was in his 50s, who I asked to do a PowerPoint presentation at our board meeting, and he had never done a PowerPoint. He was a vice, he is a vice president of my organization, never done a PowerPoint presentation. Sitting with these guys and watching them, you know, bing, 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 and embed things and click and drag and realize that, how they want to format the slide and what information, and then being able to present to audiences, that is a tremendously valuable life skill that will take them, you know, into their professional careers. And I just, it's marvelous that you're doing this at this age. They're not going to have any qualms about giving presentations anywhere along the line, so I think it's just amazing, so.
And just, I want to say one last thing. Thank you to our technology department for making this available. I can't say all the positive comments that come my way about Laurel, and I'm sure everybody here at this table will say the same thing. Teachers, administrators, how much work you've put in this year to get all of these teachers and principals to where they are, because I don't think it'd be possible without this collaborative environment that, that goes on here. And it's just, this was a testament to what a wonderful district we have and the wonderful people we have here. So thank you.
So a special thank you to our fifth graders that came out tonight with all of their families. So one last round of applause. So, boys and girls, you can go ahead and return to your seats and actually, you're free to take off with your families at this time. Thank you very much.
Heidi, we also customarily give out eagle pins to people who present to the board, and unfortunately, I forgot them tonight, so I will make sure that the students that presented tonight are presented with eagle pins. All right, we'll begin the rest of the meeting. At this point, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an, on an agenda item. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Okay, moving on. Oh, yes. Okay, sure. If you want to come up to the microphone, state your name too.
My name is Meredith Moriarty. I have a daughter in second grade at Alsmere, and my concern or question really was just, this presentation was wonderful, and I think all these aspects of education were wonderful. But at the previous meeting I watched on YouTube, you mentioned briefly about technology for the younger kids, kindergarten through second grade. I didn't hear anything about that today. And I know a lot of kindergarten or younger, you know, parents of younger children are concerned about how intense kindergarten is and how much time kids spend sitting and working. And there are concerns, you know, are they going to be doing all this kind of stuff? Are the Chromebooks going into the younger years? And whether or not that takes away time from other skills that kids need to learn without technology. So I was just wondering if there are any information about how technology is going to be brought into the younger years.
I'll defer to the superintendent.
So we did briefly touch on that. We currently do have technology in our primary classrooms. Typically, they're used in centers, since primary instruction is not often large group instruction, it's much smaller groups. And we anticipate that whatever devices they are, whether we continue with iPads, MacBooks, Chromebooks, or whatever, you know, comes next, that they would be used similarly. I don't see them being used the same as they would be in the upper grades, just because the instruction is very different. There's a lot of small group with teacher-directed instruction, so I anticipate that would continue. That helps.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Moving on, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two. Some move.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through four.
Second.
That's a first and a second? Any discussion? We, I would like to congratulate Len Keys. He's up here, up for tenure, we'll be voting on that. Good job, Len. We don't, we don't just give that out lightly here in this district, as most people know. And we look forward to a, a long-term relationship with you.
Congratulations. Congrats.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Support personnel action items, number 10. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three. Some move. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, number one. Some move. Second. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Support personnel action items, number 10. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three. Some move. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, number one. Some move. Second. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. At this time, the board would recognize anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Please come forward and state your name. Good evening. Thank you very much for hearing me out. My name is Steve Corson. Two years ago, at the Hammergrill School, the Board approved exemptions for veterans.
I have a daughter in second grade at Alsmir. And my concern or question really was just, this presentation was wonderful and I think all these aspects of education were wonderful. But at the previous meeting I watched on YouTube, you mentioned briefly about technology for the younger kids, kindergarten through second grade. I didn't hear anything about that today. And I know a lot of kindergarten or younger, you know, parents of younger children are concerned about how intense kindergarten is and how much time kids spend sitting and working. And there are concerns, you know, are they going to be doing all this kind of stuff? Are the Chromebooks going into the younger years? And whether or not that takes away time from other skills that kids need to learn without technology. So I was just wondering if there are any information about how technology is going to be brought into the younger years.
I'll defer to the superintendent.
So we did briefly touch on that. We currently do have technology in our primary classrooms. Typically, they're used in centers since primary instruction is not often large group instruction, it's much smaller groups. And we anticipate that whatever devices they are, whether we continue with iPads, MacBooks, Chromebooks, or whatever, you know, comes next, that they would be used similarly. I don't see them being used the same as they would be in the upper grades just because the instruction is very different. There's a lot of small group with teacher-directed instruction, so I anticipate that would continue. That helps.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Moving on, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two. Let's see. Some move.
Second.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through four.
Second.
That's a first and a second? Any discussion? I would like to congratulate Len Keys, he's up here, up for tenure, we'll be voting on that. Good job, Len. We don't, we don't just give that out lightly here in this district, as most people know. And we look forward to a, a long-term relationship with you.
Congratulations. Congrats.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Support personnel action items, number 10. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through three. Some move. That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. Item number 11, other action items. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action item, number one. Some move. Second. First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? That item carries. At this time, the board would recognize anyone who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Please come forward and state your name.
Thank you very much for hearing me out. My name is Steve Corson. Two years ago, at the Hammergrail School, the board approved exemptions for veterans. And I just wanted to make you aware that we thank you for that. I can only speak for myself, there's 120, I want to bring up an issue. There's 120 veterans or family members of veterans that didn't get the 2016 tax exemption. Now, the 2015 was state-regulated and wasn't available, or there was a choice. You could choose to take either the, the school tax exemption, which was probably less than, the other available tax exemption to veterans. So that's understandable. But, and 2017, that's fine too, because the business people for the school district and the assessor are very helpful in helping the veterans apply for the 2017. But 2016 has fallen through the cracks. 120 people or family members, veterans or family members of veterans, did not receive the 2016 exemption. I'd like to know why. I don't expect an answer tonight, but I would like to know why. Once again, thank you very much for giving the exemption to the veterans that were, I went to the category of combat veteran, disabled veterans, and third category, let's see. Well, there were three categories. Combat, disabled, and there was another.
And wartime.
Wartime, thank you very much. Veterans.
Yep. I'll defer to Ms. Kehoe, our business officer, to give you the answer. And I know it was stuff that occurred beyond the control of the school district, unfortunately, that, you know, I believe it was at the state level with the information, but she could explain it more.
Well.
And that there was, as soon as it came to our attention, we worked, like you said, to make sure that everyone was able to get the, the exemption going forward.
I still maintain that the 2016 year fell through the cracks. I just want to go on the record.
And it was missed and there is sadly no way to go back and remedy that. That was part of the focus of our discussions when we were speaking with both New York State Veterans Affairs and speaking with Tax and Finance. The rules or the clarification on those rules come to local governments from the state and the, as you noted, originally, the eligible funds exemptions, which is this category that could not get it for 2016, didn't have the ability to have both exemptions. And when the state finally made that correction, if I can finish that thought, when the state made that correction, they didn't release that information until after the March 1st taxable status date. So unfortunately, that was why you couldn't go back and get that. We felt badly about that, but that's why we invested so much time identifying, you know, communications to every single affected community member. We streamlined the application process so that you could have that in place for 2017.
Right, I appreciate that. I still maintain and go on the record saying that the 2016 has fallen through the cracks.
I respect your position.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to address the board on the non-agenda item? Next, future meetings. Our next meeting will be on Wednesday, January 18th. That will be at Alsmir Elementary School. 6:00 PM executive session start time with a 7:00 PM public meeting. The next meeting after that will be in February. I'm not sure the date of that, but we also have an audit committee meeting on January 23rd at 5:30 PM and also a BCAU process committee meeting at 6:30 PM that the committee, board members who are on those committees will be attending, so. We have no need to go back into an executive session. Have a motion to adjourn? Some move.
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Big students, you got done early. Come on up and sign, you need to sign out in order to get credit with your teachers.